I see it's seven o'clock, but before we get started, I would just like to introduce you to our newest member, Jim Muir.
Hello folks.
Hi Jim, nice to meet you.
He'll be um.
Can you hear me?
Yep. He'll be officially appointed on Monday.
Alright.
Jim is M-I-R-R-O-R?
No, M-U-I-R.
Thank you.
In Muir Woods.
In Muir Woods.
Right.
Alright.
No relation unfortunately.
So who else is on here? Can we tell?
I saw Bauk.
Bauk on, not everybody's on video. Who's on? Cindy, can you? Can you tell?
I can tell you that John Ludlow called, he's in surgery and Zach got stuck at work and he's not going to be able to make it. I have not heard from Stephanie or or other people. I haven't heard from Stephanie. And that's it, I guess that's all that's left.
Okay. Is Bauk on?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So just for my review or members, past members, excuse me, on minutes that we do have coming up, I want to make sure we have myself and Bauk and Bont as members who may or may not have been at their prior meetings. So the first minutes we have coming up are the April 30th, which would be myself, Bauk and Bont. Zerfus or Ludlow attended, so neither one are online. There's three of us currently, correct?
Correct.
Alright, and then also just to make sure I understand what we have for the other agenda item, just I had a little bit, but I want to make sure we have Bauk and Bont, those two. And Cindy, to approve the minutes, do we need three that were part of the meeting?
Well, we can do it with the majority of members present.
Okay, alright, that's, that was what I wanted to understand. So I guess we can call the meeting to order. Since it's seven, after seven, correct?
I have 7:02.
7:02, if we'd like to call the meeting to order and so at this time I will ask you to do roll call.
Okay, these are in alphabetical order, no preference intended. Bont?
Here.
Kowaziac?
Here.
Still working on that pronunciation and Vlacity is not here, so we have a quorum. And to approve the minutes, we need a majority of members present.
Okay. And then we also have Aaron is also online, right?
Aaron is our new city clerk.
And in fact, present, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so any of you guys, what we have, item number three on our agenda would be agenda changes. Does anyone have any changes to the outlined agenda that's been submitted for this meeting?
No, I may, I have no changes at all.
Okay, I have, I have no additions or changes. Is Jim, is Jim on mute or is he just, I can't hear him, so?
He's on mute.
Jim, push the lower, lower button on your screen.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
We can, we got you.
Sorry.
Alright, any agenda changes that you have, Jim, on this?
I have no changes.
Alright, Bont has made a motion to accept the agenda as proposed. All favor signify by saying aye.
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 We have to do roll call?
We have to, Bob, we have to do roll call apparently on Zoom.
All?
Oh, okay, on Zoom, okay, alright.
Yeah, all Zoom meetings require roll call.
Alright, so roll call.
Bont?
Yes.
Bauk?
Yes.
Kowaziac?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. We can move on to item number, agenda item number four, which is approval of the minutes from the April 30th, 2020 meeting, which would be the first agenda item. We also have August 13th and August 19th. So the items that, that we will start with would be the April 30th minutes as submitted by the zoning administrator. And I guess that, you know, that is Jim, Rich, Dick, myself, all were in attendance. So as any, either one of you, Jim or Dick, had any changes or comments to the proposed minutes from the April 30th meeting?
Can, can you scroll up, whoever has the screen, scroll up so a little bit, so I can see what the bottom of those minutes are? Yep, keep going.
This is where the start, the change starts, at number one there. A little bit, a little bit back there.
Right there.
Yep.
Yep. Okay. Yep, two. I saw that also. Three. And four. And Cindy, yeah, that, that looks good. I mean, I looked at that and that looks good, so.
Alright, and Jim, did you have any comments on the minutes on the April 30th meeting?
No, I'll, I'll move that the minutes for the April 30th meeting be approved as presented.
And I'll second it.
Alright.
And we'll do a roll call.
Yep, we have a motion and a second, so we'll do a roll call.
Bont?
Uh, yes.
Bauk?
Yes.
Kowaziac?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright, those are good minutes. Good job. So our next item for approval are minutes from the August 19th zoning board of appeals meeting. And in attendance, that is, that were in attendance yet tonight, would be Bauk and Bont, so.
This is the August 19 minutes, Aaron? The next one is the August 13th?
Oh, I'm sorry, August 13th, I'm sorry, I skipped over, sorry. August 13th should be first, right?
Correct.
I'm sorry, yeah, I had one on top of the other.
Yeah.
So same thing, we do, still have Bauk and Bont are the only two in, in tonight that were at the meeting. So I'm going to ask either one of you if you have any comments to the minutes. There was a amended set of minutes put back out by Cindy here recently to adjust to that, so.
Yeah, Aaron, can you go to the red line? There it is.
There it is, yep.
From the ones, from the minutes that I first put in your packet, which I spent an excruciating four hours working on on Monday. And finally, I went home. Since then, there's been a few errors pointed out to me and I tried to correct those in advance of this meeting, so you could have a chance to still bring out your red pens. But.
I have one.
Okay.
Put it up to bed here. The paragraph, "A diagram of the location may, to make it compliant," that paragraph would place it only seventeen and a half feet from Busy Park Street. It's from the Park Street property line, not the street.
It's from the Park Street property line, that's correct, we can fix that.
Are we going to fix it real time here, or how would you like?
We can't, we can't because it's a Zoom, it's
Okay.
But the meeting is being recorded and I am making notes on my side, so.
So I think if we do approval, we'll try to, we want to make sure that we keep track of those changes and reference them in the motion.
Definitely.
Of the approval.
At the right minute.
And then the next one is three or four paragraphs down, excuse me. Right there, that large paragraph.
Your motion, you mean?
Yes. It said, "This will result in the south side of the house being 21 feet from the property line." I think we should change that to say the lakefront side of the house.
Okay.
Because the south side, the way the thing sits is really that add-on.
I think, Aaron, that I'm looking, these are the August 19 minutes?
Yeah, these are the 13.
Okay. So we shouldn't have that motion on the 13th. That motion should be on the 19th.
It is. If you scroll up, doesn't it say these are from the?
These are from 19.
Yes.
Oh, yes, 19 adjourned from the 13th, okay, yep.
So do we need to go to the minutes for the 13th?
We should probably do the 13th first.
I was, that's what I was suggesting earlier, yeah, but I had the wrong one started.
Aaron, they're in the red line, but they're places three and four.
So you have the it starts, it starts with your first red line where you had heights crossed out, correct?
Yes.
And just a variance.
Correct. Because it wasn't really a height variance, it had to do with height, but it wasn't.
Isn't it a dimensional variance?
It's not a clear cut what it is. It's a house that doesn't conform to the setbacks that wants to be lifted three feet. So in the setback areas, it will be higher than it was before.
But it's still complying.
With the heights requirement.
Still complying with the height requirements, yes.
But, but there's no variance to the height that is required because they're not looking to go beyond our ordinance.
Correct.
Correct.
But they are looking for, the reason you're here is because there is a, it's a non-conforming line, so the variances, isn't it dimensional? That they're looking for?
Yep, I can put dimensional in there.
Otherwise, that looks good on that, on that statement.
Okay.
So scroll, yeah, scroll down.
Why do we need that statement in there? "The application is to raise the house and not determine the type of foundation."
Because I listened to the recording many times and there, it was asked of the applicant if there was, if the foundation was going to be replaced, and he said it depended on the locate, on the condition of the foundation. Once they raised it, they could see what the condition was. And, and the question was, was it going to be on stilts or was it going to be on a new foundation?
Yes, but then we further clarified that we weren't trying to determine the type of foundation, we were trying to determine is a new foundation necessary, as was stated in their package, and that part of it's left out.
So that should be included, that should be in it, in the minutes, right?
That was, that was the purpose of the questions, was to follow up on their statement that a new foundation was required and confirm that.
Well, I listened to the tape many times and he said it depends on the condition of the existing foundation.
I understand what he said. But it's in his package that a new foundation is required. And we were just probing that one subject.
Okay. So the applicant clarified that a new foundation would be required?
Yes, that was in there, but he was asking the question too. They didn't know how that foundation was going to be. You're right, Cindy, whether it was on stilts or, or whatever, they didn't know.
Right, and if the existing foundation was in good condition, they could have put piers onto the existing foundation and made, without replacing the footings and all the rest of the structure.
I didn't know anything about that one.
No, they didn't, we never got into that.
Never got into that.
So the it was just to clarify that a new foundation was required, and once you're lifting the house off of the foundation, that it's not a practical difficulty to move it three feet as long as you're already putting in a new foundation.
I think that part is in the findings, but.
Okay. So I'm just questioning why that statement is necessary without the backup that goes with it.
Are you suggesting that it be, that there be backup or, or struck from the minutes?
One of the two, yes.
How about if I add the line, "The applicant clarified that a new foundation would be required."
That's fine.
That'd be fine.
That would be perfect, thank you.
Dan? Alright. Anything else moving up?
Hold it right there, please.
I missed one. A motion was made by Bauk, seconded by Vlacity, not Stephanie.
I'd like to go up two paragraphs. What we've got there is, is correct and not necessarily complete, I think. Bauk stated that since a new foundation is planned, the house could be moved out of the required side yard setback and get closer to the street and be removed from the rear yard setback being a lesser relief and not presenting a practical difficulty.
Do you want to add those words?
Yes, that was a point that we emphasized, that this does not create a practical difficulty for the owner.
Got it.
Thank you. With those edits, I think that that's correct.
I, I, that would be fine with me, Jim. And Cindy, that would be fine with me.
I think you had three, three, four edits, I guess.
Four edits.
One is under, dimensional under number four, right? And then down further.
On four, yep.
Dimensional, clarify the foundation and not create a practical difficulty in Vlacity instead of Stephanie.
Uh huh.
I was having severe computer problems today and I did this, I don't know how many times. Yeah, I miss Stephanie.
Understand. We're, Cindy, we're with you, okay?
Jim was here when I was doing it and he saw exactly how frustrated I was.
I immediately left and let her take care of it, because I was going to be no help at all.
I can attest.
Okay, well, does that, any, any other discussion on these minutes, you guys?
No.
If, if not, I, I would make a motion to accept these minutes as adjusted.
As amended?
As amended.
Yep, I'll second. Alright, then we will go into a roll call.
In alphabetical order, no preference. Bont?
Yes.
Bauk?
Yes.
Kowaziac?
Yes.
Motion carries. And now, Aaron, we can go to the red line, 19 minutes.
Yes.
Okay, this is the one where I wanted to emphasize from the Busy Park Street property line.
Yes, and this is the one that I will also put dimensional variance.
Right, dimensional variance in it, yep.
Yep. From the Park Street property line. Okay.
Can we scroll down, please?
This also has the dimensional change right under two, right?
Number two, or the one that starts with a diagram. When I put in the 17, I missed this one in 17 and I put 7.5 instead of 17.5.
I'm sorry, above, oh, oh, I see, we've already corrected the other one where it said, I'm sorry, you're saying we've already corrected the other, above where it said height.
And that was, now Greg said it would only be 17.5 feet from the busy street?
And that's what their application shows.
That's what their application showed.
He said that, it's incorrect, but he did say it.
I, I know, I understand.
Does anybody know where it is?
Well, no, we're, we're, again, it's not the south side, it's the lakefront side.
The lake side, yeah.
And that's, those numbers are off of the sketch that I made, off of the drawing the architect presented.
This was off of the revised application, asking for what you talked about, moving it out, completely out of the rear yard setback and out of the side yard setback, but that requiring then a front yard variance.
A front yard.
Yep. Now I'm trying to look what page that's on, so.
Oh, the seventeen and a half feet, yeah, he said that. It was, you're at the paragraph, "A diagram of the location to make it compliant."
Right, if, if in fact you complied to the backyard setback, it would put the front yard setback at that, I think at that distance.
At 17.5.
From the.
I can find the page number.
From the property line.
From the property line.
Right, from the property line, yes, thanks, Jim, yes.
You could say per the applicant, this would place the house seventeen and a half feet from the property line.
Yeah, that's, all this is, all that first statement is Greg's statement. Pretty much so.
Yeah, so if we just added the words, "per the applicant," this would place the house only seventeen feet, seventeen and a half feet from the property line.
Per the applicant. And then it would be 25 feet from the water side.
Oh no.
Yes, this was, that's what they submitted.
In that, in that one, yes, that would have made it 25 feet.
That would have made the rear yard setback in compliance.
Yes.
This is just a very big packet, I'm still looking for that drawing they submitted.
Yeah, Jim, should your, should your diagram be submitted as part of the minutes?
It is. It's, it's at the very end of your packet, it's the last page of the packet.
Alright.
That's, that's my sketch.
Got it, okay, I did see it, I wasn't sure.
That, this is the one that they submit their revised application. And here's and Aaron, that's on page 83.
Can you scroll in on that, please, Aaron?
Sorry about that. My spacebar is supposed to unmute me and it's not. What page was that?
83.
83.
And the part they're looking to zoom in on is the part that's pink. And there's the 17 feet, it's really hard to read it. But that's the 17 feet to the property line.
Yes.
And that's moving the house closer to the street, completely out of the rear yard setback, and that's what their application indicated.
Yes.
So I think that is correct.
I think it is too, I would still state per the applicant.
I can do that.
Yeah, because that's not what we gave them, but that is correct.
That's what you talked about at the last meeting, moving it out of the rear yard and the gray areas where the house is now and the white and the pink is where it would have been if we did that.
Yep.
So just as a, while we're working on this, just as a reference point of not being at the meetings and following them, the, you know, the board could have just, first of all, I guess you guys chose to define what variances you would give them as opposed to just deny their application the way they submitted it, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
I think that's, I think that's important in a way. I mean, it, it appears that the board found that the, the way the application was submitted, that it was it didn't meet the standards, but the due to, due to amount of instructions and things that went on and the back and forth information and tabling, it brought it back to where you guys gave them what you would allow. That's, that's what I want to make sure, I guess, is clear.
Yes, we, we asked them to propose something that could be more compliant.
Yes.
And they came back with this and said, "Well, this is not acceptable and we have no other ideas, we want."
No other, none.
Yeah.
Gave us nothing worth it.
Right, so, so I guess my point is the board did a, much, went beyond the fact of saying we would allow, here's what we would allow, not just denying them.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, that's, that's not, that's understood, maybe not stated, but I guess want to make sure everybody understands it.
So as is concerned, Bob, was the street, so we moved the house
Yeah.
back towards the rear setback more, and that was the one that was not in compliance.
Yeah, yeah, I, I understand that, looks, I see it. Okay. Well, are there any other thoughts on the?
Sorry, which did you want to look at, the, the drawing or the minutes?
Minutes, I think.
We can go back to the minutes, Aaron.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've documented the applicant's statements, but we haven't documented the statements from our meeting where the board was in favor of bringing this more into compliance without presenting a practical difficulty to the owner. Have we put some of those in there?
I think those are put in the findings of fact.
Where are those?
They're starting with number one on the bottom of the page, and then it goes to the next page. However, it could be made more conforming to the side yard and still meet the front yard setback, a variance be for the rear yard or variance for the rear yard would be required, an extra B in there.
Strict compliance.
Yes, and that mentions it to what we did.
There's an extra B in that sentence and I just crossed it out, a variance B for the rear yard would be required. The first B is probably my first iteration of that statement, so.
Yeah, the first B should be out.
Yep.
Um, lesser relaxation would give substantial relief to the owners and other property. The owners.
Property owners.
Of other property?
Other property owners.
The, the answer, the owners and other property owners. And eliminate the need for a variance on the side yard. Okay. Because there was no need for one on the front yard before and there still is not.
Right.
No. Nope.
You're saying that's okay as it has, as written?
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
Then number three?
Number three is true.
It's only experiencing high water conditions now, but.
Yeah, I think we agreed that number four was okay, but.
Number three and, number three's fine.
Yeah, three and four.
And, and I thought three, I thought four was two.
Yeah. So the, the minutes itself, I think, are okay. I questioned the package, though. Are we going to scroll through that as well? Because there were pictures in there that were not a part of anything that was presented to us before either meeting.
I did go back and check the emails that I sent you with the revised packet and it's exactly the same what's in this packet.
I went through mine and I couldn't find any pictures of wildlife in there at all. In the package that, that we.
Not in the first package, but in the second one.
I went through it and couldn't find it. I suppose it doesn't matter.
Jim, I, I think that, I think it's fine because what we're doing.
Yeah.
So let's go to the minutes, not the picture. So I think all of that, to me, Cindy, looks fine. I don't know if, when Plow asked if the profile on LinkedIn influenced his decision, if that was his exact statements, could be. You know, to ask somebody.
It was awful close without being quite as negative as it was.
Yeah, I know, because what I thought he said is, how do you have the right to my LinkedIn?
No, that's, that's very close to what he said. He said, he asked if, looking at his LinkedIn profile influenced my decision and I said, no. And your LinkedIn profile is public information.
Public information, yeah. And he asked, asked me the question about widening of the park street and that was, that's fine.
All right. Well, then I guess from what, from what I can hear you guys saying that, from your memory and changes, that the minutes are, you got pretty good corrections already on it and that you've made sure anything, everything else is included in the attachments. Are there any, anything else you can think of that?
I, Bob, I really, I really, I really don't. I, I think for what we have there now is the sufficient from what went on in the meetings.
Okay. All right, so then, since I, I can vote, but I really shouldn't make a motion since I wasn't part of it. I'd rather have, when you guys make a motion, I would like to have that come from one of you two to approve the minutes from the April, August 19th.
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes as adjusted for August 19th.
I'll second.
All right, and Cindy, then we go, can go to a roll call.
Baant?
Yes.
Balk?
Yes.
Kowaziak?
Yes.
Motion carries.
As amended?
As amended.
Yeah. Okay. Well, let's move on. Is there any new business under item five of our agenda? Guys, have anything?
Any new business, Cindy?
Nothing. Well, we have our new member going to be appointed on Monday, so.
Yeah, Jim will be, it's, and Jim will be, you'll be full time, correct? Because that's what I was understanding of, yep.
Who's the new member?
Jim Muir, can you get, want to zoom in there and say hello?
Hi, Jim.
Hi, Jim. Welcome.
I talked to one of you, that's all.
Yeah, you talked to me, you're welcome.
Right, good. You talked to me also, but give them a little background, Jim, just that the planning commission history and stuff.
Yeah, I've, was on the planning commission for about nine years. For, first as a regular member and then the last, maybe four years as the chair of the planning commission.
Great.
Well, that's, that, that's interesting. As I started in Sagatuck, I was on the planning commission and the zoning both. And that was way too much.
Well, that was back in the day when we had to have, we always had to have a member from the zoning on the planning commission and that's.
That's right.
That's changed.
Yeah.
Most of us have spent time on both. Okay, well, then any unfinished business, I guess?
No.
I mean, and how about communications under line seven?
I have not received any communications.
Cindy, question, what has happened on the approval of the earlier minutes on the house on the hill? Have they started or done any work since we approved everything?
The April, the one we did this morning, the April 30th.
Yeah, that height variance for the.
That height variance?
Place that was being held in place by two trees.
I haven't issued any permits, so.
And also from the Park Street, has any comments or things been mentioned to you?
The one at 181, the 183?
All right, 295 Park, the one we just did where they wanted to move the house up.
I haven't had any, any contact with them. They had to wait till these minutes are approved before they could file with district court.
Makes sense.
Okay.
Uh, I don't know if we have any other public, any other public comments tonight? Anybody on besides us, I guess? All right, and probably we've covered most of our ZBA comments with our other comments, so. Anything else this evening you guys can think of?
No, not right now.
All right, so right now, Cindy, you say we don't have much coming, nothing that you, on the agenda coming up that you're aware of, right?
Correct.
Okay, so hopefully someday we can get live again and but we'll keep going like this and let Jim join in and get Zach back in when he can make it and let him. So I guess we'll adjourn our meeting. I appreciate everybody taking our time.
I need a motion and a roll call.
Oh, oh, yeah. I'll make a motion to join the meeting.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Baant?
Yes.
Balk?
Yes.
Kowaziak?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Gosh, not used to this Zoom stuff for having to do all that.
Cindy, go home and relax.
Yeah, go home, relax. All right, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep.